It is seven o'clock on February 25th. And the library board is meeting. We are being taped. And we'll call the meeting to order. First item is to review the monthly report of the library director.
I think it's the minutes.
The minutes, I'm sorry, approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Moved to approve and seconded, all in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Approved unanimously. The monthly report of the library director. Once again, we have very impressive stats for the numbers of people who visited the library in January.
Yes.
Twenty-seven thousand.
Right, and if I might point out the program cover, the program numbers, let me figure where I am. So, close to two thousand attendings, attended one hundred and five programs in the one month. When you think about that, that's pretty impressive. And those are just library programs, those are not meetings and events held here by other groups and associations.
They're our official programs.
Right.
It's like three a day.
Yeah.
Or more.
And that's very typical.
Is there a motion to approve?
Served.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We move to the financial and legislative information.
I just have the year-to-date report.
Year-to-date report.
Yes, would you?
Thank you.
So, we are, as we have been throughout this year, right on track to where we should be. We actually have healthy balances in accounts in this year, more than halfway through the fiscal year. This was through the twentieth of February, this was reported. So, I don't have any concerns and feel we're in a good place as we kind of make transitions this year. And we'll talk, Priya and I will talk a little bit later about a couple of family medical needs and such, which will present some budget challenges. And so, we feel we're in a pretty good place to start dealing with that at the end of this fiscal year. So, I'll tell you more about that later.
The year, update on the library trust funds.
That's right. This is the fourth quarter report that is in your packet. We have not received the summary, the annual summary, but this, so this is just a report for December 31st. And you'll see the interest on the library trust funds just in this quarter was $2,672.84. There is one trust fund that's not categorized under the library trust funds. For some reason, it's on the second page, or is that page three, page two. Under other trust funds, there's 814-201, which is Shrewsbury Library Memorial Trust, and that has an interest of $143. So, that's a little higher. It's been, it's been showing good growth. You'll recall that your policy has been to use the annual interest of the prior year to determine the expenditures for audio materials in the coming year. So, when we get that summary for fiscal year 2019, that will dictate what the library will use in 2021.
And the update on the 2021 operating budget request.
I included in your packet a printout from the town manager's fiscal projection one. This is his projection on the townwide budget, and obviously includes the individual departments. And you'll see for the library, library request, the town manager has recommended two changes to that budget. First, he has asked that we consider any eliminations that might be available because they are looking at some difficulties this coming fiscal year. And in discussions with the chair and with Priya and I, we had recommended the equipment, which was for the shelving be eliminated, and he has followed up on that. He has made one additional change, and that is to the office supplies account. He's recommending a $1,000 reduction. We've reviewed that, and we feel confident that we can still live within that proposed budget for the level service budget. So, this is what would be recommended to the finance committee by the town manager, and we would like, Priya and I would like to recommend that this be supported by the trustees. We think that this is appropriate, would meet all of our state certification requirements, and maintain the services that we know now.
And the last item in this area is a proposal or proposed changes to the library board and trustees' bylaws.
Just a reminder about the finance committee meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's item under there somewhere.
So, that's Saturday, February 29th. I did send around the time, I think it was 10:45.
I have it on.
But, yeah. That's much earlier than we usually do, so I hope that's good news to you, that's good news to me. Priya and I are working on the presentation now, and we'll have that all ready to go on this, this Saturday. And usually, we keep pretty close to schedule, so, you know, if you come 10:30 here shortly after there, you'd be fine.
I have an issue is I'm, I'm scheduled to work, and I have put in a request, but for Saturday, it's going to be hard.
As long as we have some representation, I think we're okay.
I'll be there.
Okay, great, yeah.
Apologize.
No, that's all right, I'll be there.
You too.
Okay. So, I just, I guess.
No, 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 thank you. Moving on to the file, review of the proposed changes to the bylaws. What you have in your packet are proposed changes that Claire has identified, and those are the highlighted items in the, in the bylaws. So, we'll have the opportunity to discuss these proposed changes. We will not vote on this until our next meeting, next month.
Because it's a bylaw amendment, your current bylaws require you to do it in a series of two meetings, discussion first, and then at a second meeting, further discussion and vote. I would just like to clarify, so there are a couple kinds of changes. Those related to the treasurer position in the finance committee establishment were those that Claire had worked on. I had done, since we were doing the review, I had offered a couple changes that I felt would help match current practices related to things like meeting postings, the ways the trustees sign off on the accounts payable and personnel, you know, other minor things that we just wanted to make sure if we're doing the review of the bylaw, we might as well fit those in. So, you have a couple of other things in there as well.
Okay. So, shall we go through these, point by point?
Sure.
In the highlighted.
Yeah.
So, could we take a look at section 2.04? Secretary records the minutes of all trustee.
This was one that, where I had made a change because it previously referred to the secretary posting the agenda and doing all that. That's not realistic in terms of the way postings are required by the open meeting law and the timing, that's the advanced timing. So, we just simplified that to note that the, that the minutes are created by the secretary and that the director posts, prepares them for the posting according to the open meeting law requirements. We took out some of the detail that wasn't necessary and was contradictory to the open meeting law. That works, yeah.
The next section is one that is not in the current bylaws, is it?
Right, that's a proposed new item.
This is a proposal to have a new position, a treasurer acting as chair of the finance committee, which will be a new committee on the board. And they will be responsible to make quarterly reports to the board of trustees about financial resources available to the library.
Is it necessary to put in, call that the trustee finance committee, so there's no confusion with the, with the town, or is that kind of a given because we're? When I first read it, I said, wait a minute, what does the town finance committee?
Oh, you're seeing as a town finance committee. Maybe the board finance committee or something, yeah. But you're right, it might be that because it's in the bylaws, it's referring to your own finance committee if you were to establish it, yeah.
Is it a subcommittee?
Small point.
Is it a subcommittee?
It would be a sub, as written here, would be a subcommittee, which you should know would require all the open meeting law postings and minutes and so forth. All subcommittees must be handled in that manner, according to the open meeting law.
Maybe that's the terminology we want to use, a subcommittee, finance subcommittee instead of committee.
Do we call the, what do we call the personnel?
We call them the personal subcommittee, the facility and grounds subcommittee.
So, that should probably should say.
Do you have an opinion about this in terms of adding a subcommittee?
As, as I voiced last meeting, I do have some concerns about it. I think one of the very important developments that we have put in place as a part of the trustee board and the library director is that we have worked to create the kind of division of duties that supports the professional and executive management of the library. We have, we have worked very hard to make sure that the library director can serve as the executive director and make decisions and act in a way that provides efficient and good service for the public. And I think that this adds a layer of complexity that will create additional work, maybe not create any additional information for the board. I think that we, as you know, like in tonight's meeting, we have shared the treasurer, excuse me, the trust fund report, the year-to-date report, and that kind of thing. I do worry that this will bog down the decisions that need to be made and make it more difficult for the library director to act efficiently.
There's, to me, there seems to be some redundancy here to have, to implement a, you know, a treasurer of the board. Like you said, we, we're provided every month with, with financial report information on both the trust funds and, you know, account balances.
The current budget, where it stands.
With the current budget, yeah.
Yeah, and I think in, in other boards that have been on, their treasurer had a more practical purpose in terms, Jeff, you write checks and you, you know, you check the.
Much more defined role.
Defined role, whereas this is more of an informative one, and I guess I'm just wondering the purpose of it because we're pretty up to date every month with the numbers.
I'm a little concerned that in the end, it will be the library director who creates the quarterly report, or at least has quite a hand in it. On top of the monthly reports that we get, so.
Yeah, I'm confused, was this a suggestion from someone that we?
Right.
Yeah, it's Claire's, this is Claire's recommendation, and we consider having this, but.
And one thing I know that she said at the last meeting was that this might be an aid to, to Priya as a new director, having kind of the support of the board to, you know, do this kind of work. I do not feel it's necessary, and, you know, I have voiced that to Claire and to you all previously. I believe that Shrewsbury Library is known for high-level man, professional management. You have allowed me to serve as executive director of this organization and make the very hard decisions that must be made, and I think that that practice is very healthy. If we are not providing sufficient financial information, I think that that's something that should be addressed through a board meeting, that we need more information on these kinds of topics. I think that that would be very useful. But I'm not sure that the financial function of the department should be controlled in a way that would slow it down.
Ellen, what is your past experience with, like Beaman Library for, was there a treasurer on?
Probably Beaman Library was, it was a much smaller institution, but no, there was not a treasurer. And at Marlborough, there was not a treasurer.
Okay. I wonder about Lemmister.
I don't know. I haven't told her.
Perhaps we should table this one.
Well, I'm sure Claire has a chance.
That's a good, a good point. She appears to be.
I mean, she did to some extent, but maybe we.
Yeah.
Now, that will mean that our vote would be then.
Delayed until April.
Well, we have to wait to vote anyway, so.
Yeah, right.
It would be another month that they push it off, yeah.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
Well, do we have to do that because we're going to, in its entirety, vote next month?
So, we, we would be able to have the, this would satisfy the month weight.
Yes, if, if I could recommend, oh Kevin, you might want to go through the other articles because some of them.
Right, right. Oh, good point.
Have to do with, you know, the town's financial practices and stuff like that, so just to make sure that we cover all those. All of them would still have to wait for a second vote, but, but at least you'd have the opportunity to think about all of those ahead of time. So, the first one is 2.06. So, we are in a very timeline with submitting accounts payable, the bills at each meeting. And as you know, you sign off on the, the bill sheet as, oh, and forgot to.
I was going to say, where are they?
We forgot to bring them down tonight. I'm sorry. I can't believe. So, so, the schedule of bills is what we're recommending in this language, is reviewed at the meeting and signed by five board members, as previously said. It was, it was signed before submitting.
Right.
You would have to have much more frequent meetings at, probably at odd times, in order to meet that requirement. It's probably a very dated kind of procedural element of the bylaws that predated the kind of integration we have with the town's finances. We are, we are a town department that runs our payroll and our accounts payable through the town's accounting and treasury, treasurer's office. And, and to meet this kind of requirement probably occurred when the trustees were actually signing off on checks that were paid of your accounts, not out of municipal, you know.
So, this is just really.
Yes.
It would almost require a weekly meeting. Or even more.
Very odd times, yeah. Well, it would require weekly, one for payroll, one for accounts payable, and it would be probably very early meetings, early day meetings. And the section 3.04 is another thing that has to do with compliance with the open meeting law. It, you know, we're basically saying that the meetings will be posted by the library director. It used to say the clerk, and I recommend that the director continue to do this. We, I have been doing this since, probably since I came to Shrewsbury, and it was done that way before me, because the library director will, will assume responsibility for meeting the open meeting law requirements for you, making sure that if there are changes, we know about what those changes are in your meeting though. And then, the 3.05 is basically allowing for electronic communications of your agenda Under 4.02, facility and the equipment, this is recognizing that we, the facility is now managed by the, the public, Department of Public Works, Public Buildings Department or Division. And so, it's saying that our recommendations will be referred to them because the library director really has no authority to make a decision that, well, I don't know, I don't know, the glass is going to be replaced in all the windows, or something like that. It really is through public facilities, so that's what that is referencing. And then, item 4.02.3 is just a correction of spelling, the word purview. And the final thing is finance committee, which is relating back to the idea of treasurer and finance committee. And moving on to duties of trustees, we previously, under section 5.03, we previously referenced only the town personnel bylaw as governing the contract with the library director, but it's actually, in addition, it's a requirement of Massachusetts general law that you have a contract, so we're just referencing section of Mass. general laws. And then, under 5.06, we're changing from approved to review, which is related to the accounts payable and personnel processing procedures we discussed. And 6.02 is about the care of buildings. It says, and I went back and forth on how to write this and this, you know, you should think about. So, the library director shall be held responsible for the care of the buildings in consultation with the public buildings. I still think it, it makes sense to say the director is responsible for the care of the buildings because really, the director is the person who is, who is initiating activity when, when it's needed. So, I felt that that was still appropriate, even though she has no full authority, she has the authority to.
You're responsible for making the problems, no.
Yes, right.
That's right.
Under Article 7, I added the section order of business at the trustee meeting instead of, I deleted order of business and just put trustee meeting agendas because it was very specific about things had to be done, and I think that that was kind of dated. And we deleted the idea at your recommendation last meeting, the idea of building project being a separate item because it does fall under facility and equipment, which is item J below. Obviously, the lettering will have to be fixed in the future, but that could be done. And then, the section 802 is, oh, the bylaws to review. I can't remember if that's revised as needed.
And needed, and this is.
Right, just.
At least every three to five years, yeah.
Which makes sense. And then, under the last item, 10.01, instead of having a specific URL that referenced the trustee handbook, we just said refer to the Mass. Board of Library Commissioners website and not even give them the URL because they changed it. Simplifies the updates or keeping it current.
So, do we need a motion to, to continue discussion?
I don't think that would hurt, Kevin. Yeah, I think that would hurt.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved.
So, you mean some wording here, because I have to put this down.
For your discussion.
The discussion of the proposed changes to the bylaws will, the discussion will be continued at the March 24th meeting and voted upon at that point.
Okay. I have to check something here right now, unless I should have looked at this before. I guess the section on amendments, up here, okay.
So, so we, we would still have to wait till April to vote on this specific?
No, I don't think so because you're discussing.
Okay.
You could still discuss again at that meet, at the next meeting, but you could vote. I just wanted to make sure it doesn't require public posting, but I'm going to recommend we publicly post it. Many bylaws will say, you know, you propose an amendment and then you post it. I don't know that we need to post it, actually, it's in our, it will be in the minutes, which are online, so that's probably sufficient. We'll make the copy of it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so Dean, that was your motion?
Yes, yep.
Who seconded?
Deb.
I think, I think that's.
Okay. Facility, equipment and grounds.
I do have one item that I just want to update you on. Priya and I have been busy getting the shelving order, well, quoted and finalized, and it is on order through Tucker Library Interiors. This is the two pieces of shelving, one for the end of the old shelf and one for in the new area, new books area below the digital display screen, so this will expand all that area. You might have noticed that we did some work on the audiobooks and moved those shelves up and consolidated. Christie, or Christie Caboldino, our custodian, actually did a lot of that, most, all of that, well, physical work, and it's been so much better and giving us more room, but this other, these other shelving units will help a great deal.
Any word on the lighting for the sign, the?
The outside sign?
The outside sign.
No, no, I haven't done, not been on that. I can't, well, I've had informal discussions, but I haven't done anything formal.
Because we just need those grounds, kind of spotlights on.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't seem like a new sign. I will start to explore options for that, and then we can think about ways we can move that forward. Talk to public grounds.
Because it's a lovely sign, but you can't read it.
At night, yeah.
It's at nighttime.
Yeah, okay.
It's so dark, yes, it is.
Yeah.
Gifts and grants.
I think last meeting, we already reported about the, the two Greater Western Foundation grants, so we're pleased. We have been getting some gifts to the library foundation recently for my retirement, so that's nice to see and that's continuing, so.
Yes. And, and by the way, this is an appropriate time to say what a lovely farewell letter you wrote for the, for the newsletter, and Claire too, had a nice comment, but I just want to say that because that was your last one.
Yes, yeah, right. Okay.
Review and act upon the 2021 service calendar.
Okay, so, this is just every year, we ask the trustees to approve the service calendar for the coming year. Priya has worked with the library managers to develop this year's recommendation. There's nothing really different or unusual. Sometimes when holidays fall in a certain time, it's, you know, it's hard to decide what the openings and closings will be. Town personnel policy does dictate what happens if a holiday, official holiday, recognized holiday falls on a Sunday or Saturday, so that's reflected in the recommendations that are here.
So, it'll be Friday, July 3rd.
Exactly.
As well as Saturday.
Exactly. Or was there something I'm thinking of? Christmas?
Yeah, Christmas, we looked at and kind of went back and forth, right? So, it's a Friday. So, this is proposing that we're open on Saturday, Sunday. Same with, so New Year's, we would be open January 2nd, January, you know, right?
No.
It's, it's a hard one. We go back, you know, as managers, we've had this conversation a lot. Do we, you know, it is lower volume on those days, it certainly isn't, but do you close four days in a row?
Right, that's, that's our, that's our dilemma. It's a, it's a long time. Yeah. So, that's, that's, that's the recommendation came from the managers at this one.
Subject to adjustment.
Right, so this would require a vote, Kevin.
Okay. Do we have a motion to, oh, do you have a question? Jeff? I must be missing, I just don't see the 26th here, the Saturday.
It's not.
That's what we're saying.
That was the point. Or that was the point of discussion, you know, it's.
Did you discuss closing on the 26th and keeping it open on the 27th?
I don't know. Can Priya handle this one?
I mean, I recommended this and all the managers did agree that this was.
Okay, okay.
And it's the week, and it is the weekend.
Right.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, then I make a motion that we approve the service calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. It's been moved to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
It's approved.
So, this gets posted on the, the library website. It helps govern how our checkouts are controlled in our online system, so we get it out there as soon as possible so people are aware.
Right.
Moving on to personnel, we'll have an update on the hiring process for the assistant director position.
The assistant director position was posted the end of January, and the last date for submitting applications was February 21st, and we've received over 15 applicants. submitting applications was February 21st, and we've received over 15 applications.
Wow.
And I'm scheduling the interviews first week of March, and hopefully, the second interviews will be the third week of March. So, planning on that.
How many people do you expect to interview for the first round?
At least half a dozen, I think.
Oh, good. At least, that's a good...
We have gotten very good applications. The hiring committee will consist of me, Sonya as one of the managers, Lisa Powers from the trustee board, and Christina Zerobi, as a community member and as the coordinator of the English Conversation Circle and Memory Cafe.
Good match.
Yes.
Would it be appropriate to ask if there are any internal candidates?
I think it's appropriate for, for us to say yes or no.
Yes.
No, I'm just curious. Oh, good. Good. The FMLA leaves?
Okay, so I'll start, and Priya and I will kind of cover this issue together. So, we have three employees who are out or will be out on the Family Medical Leave Act and the Temporary Disability Program through the town. One is currently out for surgery, and we are making, managing that absence with other existing staff right now, and it's a short leave, and we're very confident that we'll be able to manage that. We have two other employees who will be out for more extended leaves, and they will be out for maternity leave leave, and we have dates. If you can kind of share the dates with us, Priya?
Sure. So, the combined leave would be from May 11th through November 20th. So, it's two people on, two staff members on maternity leave, so it's a long period of time.
Luckily, there's only a very slight overlap, which is helpful.
Yeah, very slight. And both are professional librarians. So, we propose to hire a temp librarian from Bibliotems. Bibliotems is, is part of the Massachusetts library system. It's a staffing agency, and we can hire, what we propose to hire is a new professional, that is a person who's newly got their master's degree in library science, because both these are professional positions. And the time of the year, as you can understand, is the summer, so it'll be very busy, young children's room and young adult services. So, the person would be responsible for program implementation, for planning and implementation for teens and children, volunteer coordination, providing volunteer orientation first, you know, as you know, hundreds of teens who volunteer during the summer, so managing that program, marketing and outreach, publicizing our programs, helping with the summer reading program, our, the library summer reading program, and helping support the school summer reading. So, it's a, it's a very busy time during the summer. So, we propose to hire someone from Bibliotems for 20 hours a week, and this person will serve in, in the teen services first for three months, and then in the children's, children's room. And we also propose to increase some part-time staff hours, 10 hours a week, because the young adult librarian also covers the reference desk, so, you know, to cover the reference desk, to cover children's...
Right, and each of them cover evenings and weekends, you know, one evening a week and one or two Saturdays a month.
Saturdays a month. So, that, so that could be 10 hours of part-time staff hours that would be increased. And do you want to talk about the funding for that?
Sure. So, Priya and I met with the town manager to discuss how we cover the costs related to these poli, town policies, and he's very supportive of helping us find a way to address those costs. This crosses two fiscal years, so May and June will be in this fiscal year, right? And then, we jump into fiscal year 2021. We also have a lot of personnel changes occurring in, in the March-April timeline, which will affect our salary and wage accounts, because we have people who come in at different rates, possibly lower rates. We have the new salary schedule that will impact this. We don't know exactly what our closeout amount will be for the end of this fiscal year, but we believe we'll have some funds additional to apply to this cost. But the town manager has encouraged us to, for, once we're ready to calculate that figure, to request a reserve fund transfer for the last two months of fiscal year 2020. So, that would be for May and June. Where, Priya and I have a meeting with the town manager, a monthly meeting next Monday, no, the following Monday. Yeah, the second week of March. And we'll, by then, we'll have some numbers developed, and we'll be discussing those with him and deciding about the amount of transfer to request. But some of it, we may not know until we get very close to the end of the fiscal year. So, you know, how all the hirings play out, then you'll know what your total costs are, you know, and you'll have a better sense. So, we can project what these additional services or these additional staffing hours will cost, but we cannot fully project right now what these, what our salary expenditures will be for the remainder of the year with the unknowns in terms of personnel. But he has encouraged us to put that transfer fund as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, and Priya and I are working on numbers for that. And then, for fiscal year 2021, there's even more ambiguity, because we have so many different staffing changes going on, that we may need to wait till we get into fiscal year 2021 a really good amount to help project where we'll be. So, what Priya and I have agreed, this is really comes down to monitoring the payroll closely, monitoring the costs related to the Bibliotems and the additional staffing, working with the town manager about these, these accounts as we go through. And for fiscal year, our current year, we're in fiscal year 20, making a reserve fund transfer, and then making other projections in fiscal year 2021 for the remainder. We may also, because hiring Bibliotems does not come out of salary and wage accounts, it would have to come out of our professional services account, and the money exists in the personnel account, not in the, not in the sal, not in the professional services account. And when the town meeting votes on the budget, it exists for, they approve two portions, salary and wage and all other costs. So, if we had salary and wage money that we needed to spend for Bibliotems, we would actually have to have approval of moving those funds down. So, that might require some support from the town meeting later during fiscal year 2021, and the town manager will work with us to, you know, to get through that. We've done this before. We've hired Bibliotems before and gone through this process, so it's not something that's unusual. It just requires a little bit more shifting projections as you go through the fiscal year.
So, the Bibliotem would be, you mentioned 20 hours a week, but that's just for that professional staffing, and then there would also be part-time staff hours that we...
10 hours a week.
Yeah, 10 hours a week. What we're proposing, so these, these positions, each work 37.5 hours a week, we're proposing to cover 30 hours a week. And if you think of how we're doing it, what the proposal is, is 20 of it will be a professional librarian, 10 will be paraprofessionals to cover desks. The par, the professional tem would actually be responsible for professional level duties, running and planning programs, managing volunteers, all those kinds of things Priya was mentioning there.
Sounds like a lot to do.
It is. Yeah, it is.
Any consideration of volunteers helping out?
We, we have a tremendous, a tremendous use of volunteers in the summer, and that's part of why we're thinking Bibliotems is important, because we'll be able to maintain that volunteer program. And we should say that both of these young professionals are just amazing with the amount of degree of planning they have already done for these absences. They have worked with each other in a way that will support each other in those times when each of them is absent, they're assuming some of the responsibilities of the other, and they're also planning out programming schedules.
So, this one person is not walking into a full-time...
No, exactly.
They've got some guidelines.
They will definitely get guidelines.
Yeah, and we, don't forget, we now have the full-time Youth Services Assistant Position who works in both the children's room and in the young adult room, and she will be a steadying force for having familiarity with what occurred in the past. And we have had situations where we've been without head of children's, for instance, and Priya and I managed that department independently in the past. I, I do caution you that this is a, you know, at the time when Priya's coming in as a director and taking a lot of responsibility, it is hard to, to manage all these different things going on personnel-wise. But she has lots of experience. The, the department heads are very aware of the situation and are ready to step in and do what we need to do. We have, we have a great staff. They, they will step up, and as I said, the, both of these two young women are just so hyper-prepared, helping us prepare for what's, for what they will be missing.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's comforting.
Yeah. So, at this point, we have no specific numbers to recommend to you, but Priya will be coming to you with information about, we, you know, we have to, we're going to ask for a reserve fund transfer for this year, and this will be the amount, or we're going to need to seek a way to transfer money from this account to that account. And, you know, or talk with the town manager about other resources we might use.
The Library Foundation?
We had put out a, a request for letters of interest, and we have received no letters of interest. Yeah, it might have, it was, we found, it was also a short timeline. So, the foundation board is going to be doing some brainstorming and some actual reaching out to individuals. So, if you have any suggestions for possible members, please, I guess, convey it to me or Nancy or Priya, and we will share that with the board. But they're, at their last meeting, they discussed that idea of having to actually, you know, cultivate possible members.
Update on the Friends activities?
So, we had our Friends of the Library Foreign Film Festival, the last one, women, the last one was what?
Last Sunday.
This Sunday.
This past Sunday.
Yeah, this past Sunday. Want to thank Melissa Meisowitz, who is one of the program chairs, who runs this program. It's really well-received by the community. And thank you to the other volunteers like Deb and who else was...
Patricia Secker.
Yeah, helping out with that program.
But also, just to add that this is Melissa's last go-around with this.
That's right.
And just really applaud her efforts. It's been a wonderful program, hopefully, it will continue.
Right. The Friends are now looking for a program chair. That's right, yeah. And that, just a reminder that the annual book sale is coming up, March 26th to March 29th. That's a little earlier than previous years, so watch for advertisement on that.
And I think the sign up, volunteer sign up has gone...
Yes.
It just came out. Other business?
We just have a thank you from the library staff for, we didn't even close it, that for the appreciation practice that the trustees hosted for the staff on Valentine's Day. And thank you to Nancy Gilbert for organizing all the...
Thank you to all of you for, for helping out. I think it meant a great deal to the staff. It went pretty smoothly, so that's great.
Somebody said we should have it every week.
Or at least once a month.
The weekly appreciation.
Well, maybe just the stones, right?
It was tough. So, our next meeting will be March 24th, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.